Okay, good evening, everyone. And I would like to call budget and appropriations to order at 6:30. Thank you, everyone, for coming from my committee. I have Todd Cobus sitting with me. Counselor Dolan, Counselor De Simone, Counselor Blair, Counselor Waterman, Vice President Jackson, thank you so much for joining us tonight. As we continue to wrap up what's been a very interesting 2020, we do have our city assessor Julie Hobson, who's going to be walking us through the tax classification presentation. So we can vote it out of committee on, well, we have the public hearing rather, so we have the public hearing on the 20th. We will call for a committee meeting on the 27th. And then from the committee meeting, we'll have a special meeting of the full municipal council in order to vote the tax classification on the 27th. Just the timing, especially with it being a presidential election year, we can't have, you know, we want to make sure that we have the quorum that we need in order to pass this. Especially, we have Veterans Day thrown in there, and we have Thanksgiving, so in order to get it to the state and to DOR at the appropriate time, we're going to try to get it all wrapped up before November 1st. So, that being said, before I recognize Assessor Hobson, I just want to vote out four quick, quick motions. And this is just for the tax, tax cap. So, from the docket of October 20th, 2020, the mayor respectfully submits a communication from Budget Director and Administration Jeremy Stahl, detailing updated state assessments that were released after your honorable body passed the fiscal 2021 budget. The final state and county assessments are $17,920 less than what was submitted during the budget process. And the new amount is $6,041, I'm sorry, $6,41,522. Therefore, I entertain a motion to rescind the intergovernmental state and county assessments for $6,422 within Council vote number 15 of June 23rd, 2020. Replace it with the amount listed below. So, from, it would be 19801000, state and county assessments, 56 intergovernmental, $6,41,520. Total state and county assessments, $6,41,522.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. So, again, as we all know, whenever we're doing the budget, we're dealing with projections. So, this one's coming in just, do you have a?
Just a point of order. I believe for intergovernmental, you read $6,41,520, and I'm showing 522.
It should be 22 if I said 20. Thank you. We'll take that as a friendly amendment. I appreciate that. So, this is just to, again, where rescinding the first vote of the higher amount, replacing it with what the final numbers were. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. From the docket of October 2020, October 20th, 2020, the mayor has informed the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, has officially certified the fiscal 2021 new growth at $1,109,056, which is $509,056 greater than the preliminary estimate carried into the fiscal 2021 budget. Therefore, I entertain a motion to approve a supplemental appropriation to the following accounts. $302,000 to account 11241000-59600, citywide contribution to stabilization. $202,000 to account 11241000-596300, citywide contribution to special education stabilization. In order to, just about, in order to properly reflect this measure on the fiscal 2021 tax recap, it is necessary to vote this matter prior to the submission of the fiscal 2021 tax rate. The 9,056, not supplementally appropriated here, is being used to balance the fiscal 2021 balance and reduce the use of free cash.
Second.
Thank you. So, again, this was an appropriation which came in higher for new growth at just over half a million dollars. So, we're going to take 300, put it to the citywide contribution to the stabilization account, as we have done in years past. And now, we're also able to put the money to the 200,000, which was cut during the budget process for the citywide contribution to special education stabilization. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
This makes sense, and I applaud the mayor for doing it.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. All right, if there's nothing else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. From the docket of October 2020, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $1,694,354.34 of available free cash from account 1000-35900, undesigned fund balance free cash to fund the fiscal 2021 general government annual budget.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this is the available free cash that we need just to fund the budget.
Can you do me a favor and read the amount to appropriate again?
$1,694,354.34, thirty-six cents, rather, thirty-six.
Okay, yep, and that's perfect.
All right. Any other questions, thoughts, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Finally, from the docket of October 20th, 2020, I entertain a motion to approve a supplemental appropriation of $1,157,035 to account 13001000-592043, education AHS issue three, interest.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. Note, and this is for everyone's information, this is the debt service due on the recently issued AHS debt, and will be raised on the recap on the debt exclusion form. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And that is, those are all the motions that we have for tonight. But I would like to, at this time, recognize Julie Hobson, our city assessor, who will present her second presentation for tax classification, and it's truly been a unique year. So, Julie, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Thank you very much. Good to be here. Hi, everyone. So, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to welcome you and thank you for coming. And, you know, I know that this is a challenging year in a lot of, lot of ways. So, looking forward to your presentation, and thank you again.
All right, thank you. And I am going to try to, this is my first time doing this, I'm going to try to share my screen. Before I do, I did email the PowerPoint presentation to all the counselors, and I hope that you all did receive it. If anyone needs a paper copy of it, I will certainly get you one. It's also posted on the website, on the assessor's page, so you'd be able to see it there.
Julie.
Yes?
Peter Blair, do me a favor, I'm an old guy, give me my copy in my box, please.
I definitely will. I did leave a few copies in the council meeting room. I didn't know if anybody would be stopping in to pick them up. I'll make sure one gets in your box.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And so, without further ado, let me see, I can make this work.
And just a reminder, while Julie's getting this up on the screen for all of us, the public hearing will be Tuesday.
Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Did it work? Oh, good, okay. So, fiscal year tax classification presentation for 2021. And of course, we, every year, I remind you that cities and towns may elect to adopt a minimum residential factor less than one, thereby shifting the levy to another class. The minimum residential factor is determined by the Commissioner of Revenue. And for this year, it's .904176, or a maximum shift of 1.5. This meeting is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, so that the assessors may provide all pertinent information to the city council in order for it to make its determination. The first step in the process is the Department of Revenue approving that assessments are at full and fair cash value. This is a Department of Revenue Form LA4 comparison. It shows the values by class as approved, as well as parcel and value differences from the previous year. As you can see by this, the residential class increased by 4.3%, while commercial and industrial increased by 2%. Personal property did increase by 8.5%, that's mainly due to increases in utility valuations. Before I move on, any questions?
I have a quick one, Julie.
Sure.
I'm just curious, the exempt property went up by two parcels, what were those?
Those two parcels in particular, I believe, one of them was Lhasalet went fully exempt. There was another parcel that was accepted as a gift by the city. The parcel ID, I don't know off the top of my head, but it was gifted to the city. I believe it's going to conservation.
Okay, thank you.
Did I say gifted by the city or to the city? Sorry.
You said by, but I think you meant to.
I meant to.
Yeah.
So, assessors use mass appraisal procedures and techniques when determining fair cash value of properties. Basically, we analyze sales from the previous calendar year. And in an interim year, which this was, adjustments are made to properties to ensure, again, fair and equitable assessments at full and fair cash value. This chart, I think, shows pretty well that the sales really dictate the assessments. So, the bars are by year assessments in each dollar range. The lines are the sales that were, that were made for each year. In 2019, the assessor's office processed 944 deed transfers. Of those, 633 were valid arms-length sales. Those are the sales that can be analyzed. And based on those, property adjustments were made to ensure, again, full and fair market value was achieved. The red line here, I just wanted to show what we're looking at so far for 2020. Also, just to give you an indication, the sales, again, are increasing, the assessed values are going up. The, you can see that it pretty much starts out peaks at 350,000. And we're seeing sales and values increase in the city.
Julie, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is that a surprise to you that we're seeing the sales and the assessments go up, considering everything that's going on in the economy right now?
It was a little bit, I think everybody was unsure, you know, what was going to happen. But construction didn't slow down, it didn't stop at all. It was considered one of the, you know, oh, God, now I can't, yeah. So, and people who already had contracts in for houses, basically, you know, they kept, and I think a lot of the people buying these houses didn't lose their jobs, they, you know, just started working from home. And so, no, I was at first unsure how it was going to be affected. But as it played out, I'm not surprised, and I'm not surprised that it's going to continue now that everybody is more adjusted to life as it is right now, I guess.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is another Department of Revenue form.
Before we jump forward, I have a quick question, we can?
Todd Cobus?
Yeah, sorry.
If you could, yeah, if you could go back. So, I love seeing the combination of the assessment here and the sales numbers sort of overlaid, and it really tells a great picture. My question is, can you assess my house for less? And so that I could save some money on taxes, please? And I say that jokingly, but I do get a lot of, there's been a lot of conversations about Sandcastle, and where they recently just had that sale for so much, all of a sudden, their assessment jumped up quite a bit. And we've had conversations where you've mentioned that you're not allowed to, like, you have, you have to follow the law, and you can't just assess a particular piece of property at less when the sale has happened. So, you don't have to talk about it now, but at some point, can we talk about sort of the laws that rule here in why things are assessed the way they are? Just as a reminder to people, because that question has been coming up quite a bit recently.
Yes, absolutely, and that's why I wanted to include a chart like this. I know it only shows single-family residential, but I mean, this follows right through with the entire city. So, I think it, and it really does show, hey, the assessments do follow the sales. Didn't move on.
Thank you.
Department of Revenue Form LA13, the new growth certification. In fiscal year 21, new growth was $1,109,056. Seventy percent of that new growth was in the residential class, mainly single-family homes and condominiums. And again, that just goes back to, they didn't stop, you know, they didn't stop building. And people are buying them, people, people want to move into the city. I think, you know, that's a good thing, so. This just is a pie chart illustrating that, that, you know, that's the portion of new growth that came from residential. Like, it said, 75 new single-family residential properties were completed in fiscal year 21 with an average sale price of $533,500. Twenty new condominiums were completed with an average sale price of $337,500.
Julie, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry to keep interrupting you.
Not at all.
So, we're talking about fiscal 21 right now. So, these properties that were completed since July, and sold since July through, because we're still in the second quarter of fiscal 21.
Right, so these are properties that were completed by June 30th and sold within the same time period. I wanted to get sales of completed homes to show. So, some of them, how do I, some of these properties did sell after the sales analysis that we did for the fiscal year 21 assessments. But I just wanted to indicate that that's where the assessed values came in at, you know, that's what we're looking at.
Yep, makes sense.
Okay. And I also wanted to point out that, if you go back to the bar graph, 65% of single-family residential properties are valued under 300,000. But 67% of that single-family residential levy is paid by the properties valued over 300,000. So, really, the people who are purchasing the more expensive homes are picking up that portion of the levy that, you know, that probably they should, you know. And so, once new growth is approved and the debt exclusion is finalized, the levy limit is calculated. The levy limit is the base, which is the limit from the previous year. To that, you add the proposition 2.5% increase. New growth is then added to that, and the debt exclusion, if any, we know we do have one in Attleboro, to give you your new fiscal year 2021 levy limit of $82,578,668. That limit can never exceed the levy ceiling, which is equal to 2.5% of the entire assessed value of the city. Our levy ceiling right now is $130,370,504. This sample is illustration only. This shows what the tax options would look like, the shift options would look like if there were no debt added into the levy. The levy limit would be 79 million, a single tax rate would be $15.17 per thousand dollars of value. This is not the reality. The fiscal year 2021 actual tax levy options are shown here. This has the debt exclusion added in, which is $3,488,075. That equates to about 67 cents of tax per thousand. I included on this sheet, the median, the average, and the new home average assessed values to show you the sample bill amounts, to get a feel of, you know, what's the difference between the median, you know, what the average mid-person is paying, and what the new homeowner is paying. And I'm not going to go through every single line, but you can see that the average single-family home, yeah, single-family residential homeowner will see around a $225 increase per year, or roughly $56 per quarter. Any questions on that? I'm sorry. This just illustrates how the shift will impact, impact the residential and CIP rates. This is a good visual to show that, you know, a 10% shift to the commercial, industrial, personal property relieves about 2% off of the residential rate. And this is just a history, see where we've been with tax rates and tax shifts. You can see that the tax rates have been pretty stable over the last five years. And this is a five-year analysis of valuation by class, the percentage change each year, the median and average assessments for residential and commercial, industrial, the levy for each year, the actual percent of levy that would have been borne by each class, what the shift was, and what the percentage of levy actually was that was borne by each class. I just kind of wanted to give a five-year overall snapshot of where things are. I did want to point out that I, just for illustrative purposes, this is no indication what I think you should do, but I used the fiscal year 20 tax shift that you have voted of 1.35 on this chart. That's what you're seeing there for the tax bills. I use that tax rate. This does show, I think it's a good indication that the values have increased very proportionally to the levy. So, we haven't seen a huge dip in the market, things have remained pretty stable, hopefully, that that will continue. I don't see any big indicators in the residential. I think, I know there's a lot of talk about how this year is going to impact commercial and industrial properties for the fiscal year 2022 assessments, but that remains to be seen.
Julie, can you talk a little bit more about that, just because I think it is a topic of discussion?
The 2022?
Yeah, and what's the thought process, and why are people thinking that?
So, for commercial and industrial properties, the income approach to value is used, and you're always analyzing the full previous calendar year. Well, we all know how this year was. So, when you're using the income from this year to determine values for fiscal year 2022, the speculation is that, you know, a lot of business owners, a lot of owners of commercial property saw a big dip in revenue, and the income approach capitalizes revenue into value. So, that's the thought, you know, it's just, it's, when we see the income and expense reports come in, we'll really know. But there is a lot of talk and a lot of, you know, concern with other assessors and the Department of Revenue, how is it going to look, you know, no one can really say for sure, but.
Okay, great, thank you.
Every year, we give you the top 10 taxpayers. The values are the fiscal year 2021 values. I use the fiscal year 2020 tax rates to calculate this. And a comparison of the fiscal year 2020 tax rates for Bristol County. Attleboro, as you can see, ranked eight on the average single-family tax bill. Kind of right down the middle where we've been. And the next three pages are the full what-if scenario pages from the Gateway system. It's more in-depth, it shows, you know, the exact share percentages, levy amounts for multiple shifts. That's what that is. And that is the end of my presentation.
Well, very good job. Thank you for that. Before I open it up to the committee for questions, I just have a few that I'd like to ask, if you don't mind. We talked an awful lot about residential and impacts to residential. What do you think we need to be looking out for, or, you know, what are some of the concerns that we have to be cognizant of if we increase the split? If we, what's the impact that we're looking at that we could be having on businesses, say, if we keep it the same?
So, I would say, an increase to the shift, oh, obviously, it increases the tax rate. The tax rate is used in determining the cap rate that's used to capitalize the income from the properties into value. The higher the cap rate, the lower the value. The higher the tax rate, the lower the value. So, you raising, raising the shift and the tax rate to the commercial, industrial may inadvertently lower the values in commercial and industrial, thereby, the following year, increasing the percentage share that residential has to pay.
No, I appreciate that, because I think a lot of times in years past, we've had a lot of discussion about, okay, so if we do this this year, what's the impact it's going to have next year? And, you know, how do we get it back down if we should choose to?
Right, right.
Okay, Counselor Blair, then Counselor Dolan?
Hi, Julie. I don't know if you can answer this off the top of your head, but I've got a lot of questions. There are people, similar homes that I own, that seen an increase that seen an increase last year in their assessment by like ten percent, twelve percent. Can you explain to me why the assessment on a twenty-year-old home all of a sudden jumps ten, twelve percent?
So again, that would, that would go to the overall analysis of all the sales that occurred in the city, like style homes. Location, all of these things are, are factored in and adjusted. So I'm not sure what, what style homes they have. I can tell you capes were huge last year. Ranches, you're going back to fiscal year twenty, ranch houses were a hot seller. They, they were worth a lot of money to people. People were paying a lot of money for them. So it, and it's the overall market of the city.
So even though you've owned a home for twenty, twenty-five years, you're going to see an increase of ten to twelve percent because you have a neighbor and you're in a neighborhood that they built new homes and those homes are sold for tremendous amount of money?
It could have an impact. Again, that would go to the, to the land value tables and, and how those are adjusted as opposed to the, to the building tables, but yes, you could. If you're in a very desirable location, if people want to be where you are and they're willing to pay a lot of money, it, it's all, yeah, full fair market value.
My, my problem is, is really somebody that's been in the home thirty years and gets, you know, a ten, twelve percent increase in their assessment. Not only is the tax going up, but right on the top, they're paying ten percent more plus two and a half. It just seems to me sort of unfair to a person that's owned the home for that period of time to get hit with such a, a large increase. You explained it, so.
I, I Yeah. And I would say, I know that's not what the conversation tonight is about, but I really do think it's important for people to know the, the relief options that are out there for them, exemptions. There's a, you guys, you guys, the council voted to increase the limits to the tax deferral, the senior tax deferral, and I, I really hope you'll spread the word to your constituents and your friends that there, there are options. And hopefully, if they qualify for them, they can get some, some relief that way.
Basically, it's the reason that the more expensive homes now are up there, seven fifty, eight hundred thousand, that affects that home that was, say, assessed at five and change a previous year is up to six sixty or something?
That, that would play a part in it. Again, it, yeah, it's the whole Attleboro market. People want to come into Attleboro right now, which I think is a great thing. You know, we got, we have a lot going for us and you're going to see that reflected in, in the prices that, that people will pay to be here. And unfortunately for, right, for people who have been here for a long time, they are going to see their assessments go up. That's what you always hope that your real estate will appreciate. I, I do feel for, for people that are hurting and, and I know that it's a burden. That's why I really, any, anytime my, my doors open, come in and, and talk to me and see if you qualify for, for any kind of relief.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Council Dolan?
So would you mind repeating what you said? And I wish I could say what you said to repeat it back to me, but you said something about if, if we were to put the shift over to commercial and then, you know, with COVID and everything and the values going down for twenty-twenty-two, we would inadvertently do what? Do you, do you know what I'm asking?
Inadvertently increase the share percentage that the residential would pick up in, in the following year. As, as the commercial values go down, that levy, obviously, is going to shift back over to the residential. Their share percentage is going to be that much larger in the residential class.
And when would we see that? Like, when would, when in the year would we see that happen? So in other words, so when they assess the values of the commercial property and obviously if they're lower because of COVID. So with this, I mean, is this happening right now?
No, you would see it the following year. So.
This year, this time next year?
Right. So in, in the fiscal year, you're always assessing the full previous calendar year. So you're almost, almost two years behind, but not quite. So your fiscal year twenty-twenty-one values are as of January first, twenty-twenty, based on data from the calendar year twenty-nineteen, from January first, twenty-nineteen to December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. So fiscal year twenty-twenty-two is going to look at twenty-twenty data.
Okay.
And the twenty-twenty data is going to be based on the tax rate that is developed from the shift that you vote.
So there's no, so there's no way for us to predict? So it hypothetically, if we keep it the same or go up a point or down a point or, or, so if we were to shift, again hypothetically, I don't want anybody freaking out, you know, we'll go to one-point-four, shift it over to the commercial. We don't, we don't know the ramp, we won't know the ramifications, or if we go the other, or if we stay the same, the ramifications for the residential side could be, if the values in commercial are substantially lower, what the residential side has to pick up could be enormous.
Right.
And we have no idea what that'll be.
And, and you almost, I, I want to say this the right way, you almost run the risk of shifting yourself to the max and then you have nowhere to go.
Right. And we wouldn't, we would, I don't suspect that we would do that. Again, I was just being hypothetical. That's concerning. That's, you know, because we can't predict
Right.
The residents could be in for a brutal, a brutal tax bill and we don't know what that'll be because we don't know the values of the commercial and how much of the levy they'll take.
Right.
That's a strong point, Council Dolan. And I think last year and even the year before, when you had the counselors such as myself, Council Blair, who voted against such big increases from the one-point-three-three from, to the one-point-three-five. You're articulating exactly what our concerns were and it would continue to be this year. I mean, it's
Right, but we didn't, I mean.
And, and that's why I think that the city assesses information this year is so important because now we're seeing, feeling for the first year, the full impact of the debt exclusion. We're seeing what the impact and, and luckily, the impact from COVID hasn't hit the residential side of things as much as we probably would have thought. I am curious to see.
Well, it's hurt the residents. Not the values of the residential side, but the people that don't have jobs, you know?
Correct. So, so it's, this is why we like to have these conversations. It's why I like to do this on an off night because it gives us the opportunity to really just focus in on this and ask the assessor the questions because this is my seventh tax classification and, you know, I still ask Julie some remedial questions from time to time, you know, because it's so cumbersome, it's so complex and there's so many components to it. Council Cobus, do you have a question?
I, I, I didn't fully understand Julie's explanation to, to Laura or your explanation of, of where your concerns were. Is, is, is it my understanding that you're saying if we shift more to commercial than potentially, potentially the total assessed value? So how, how do we get from, if we shift more towards commercial, the total assessed value of everything in commercial is going to go down? That doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me.
So there's no guarantee that, that that's what's going to happen, but the tax rate is used within the cap rate that's used, which to capitalize the income to the assessed values. So as the tax rate goes up, the cap rate goes up, the higher cap rate means a, a lower value.
Okay.
And we've got to make up that difference somehow.
And then, oh, sorry.
No, 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 continue.
But, right, so as the values go down, if they do go down in commercial, it's just by nature, that means the percentage.
Right. And that, that part makes sense to me. But when you're talking about the cap rate moving, how much is that moving by? Like, what, like, if this changes, is it a significant impact to the cap rate or, or is it, are we talking?
So you add the, the tax rate into the cap rate. So let's say a twenty-one fifty-six cap rate would be two-point-one added onto the cap rate. And so I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of exactly how to describe it to you. So it's basically like a two percent shift in the value, if I'm saying that right. It's, it's not a huge impact in, in, in the cap rate. Like, it's a percentage. So again, it'd be like a, you know.
It, it, I, I don't think we have to get into the math of it here, but if you could send me sort of a copy of, of the instructions for that calculation, I'd love to, to run through it.
I will, I will, for sure.
Julie, would you mind sending that to Virginia so she can distribute to all the counselors?
Yeah.
Because again, and, and it's a great point, great line of question, Council Cobus, because I think really when you're looking at it, it just shows the complexity and why this is so important and why, again, I like to have these meetings on an off night where it's the, we're not feeling rushed and we can ask the questions. Council Dolan, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, please. And I just want to make sure my point was understood, if I understood it correctly, because when Julie, when you said, because the assessed values of commercial include revenue, correct? So if.
Right. Commercial, industrial, and some apartment buildings are, use the income approach to value.
The income approach, right. So that's, that's why I'm concerned that clearly we're not going to know the numbers and the effects of COVID till later. And anything we do now can greatly affect what happens later that we don't know about. That could really, you know, because when you talk about the levy and the values and everything, that could really come down on the residents. Am I, am I correct? Am I thinking or am I lost?
It, it will shift. And, and to Council Cobus's point, I don't want you to think that it, it's going to decrease values by fifty percent if you, you know, shift an additional ten percent. It's not that severe, but it does impact. And when you're talking about, you're talking about a, a total valuation, you know, millions of dollars, even, you know, one percent of that value shifting one way or the other will make a difference.
But it'll still, even if we, if we leave everything, status quo, we don't shift anything. If next year, if the commercial values, which if they, we do the income approach, we don't know how much less income, and so that'll be less values, more values on the houses, excuse me, the residents, which will take on the bigger burden.
Right.
Right? So if we don't know those numbers and we whichever, whatever we decide to do, so we either have to wing it and hope for whatever the values are, or do status quo, stay where we're at and fingers crossed for the residential taxes for the next year.
Well, if I could interject, I think, I think your, your line of thought is spot on, Council Dolan. I think, I don't know that we're winging it and, and the reason I say that, and I'm not trying to throw words back in your face, but I think that shows and illustrates the importance of the historical data that Julie's been able to present to us. So we can kind of get an idea and try to, to identify the trends to the best of our ability. And at the same time, I think, and, and, well, let me phrase it as a question for Assessor Hobson. With COVID, we, we're seeing a lot of businesses across, you know, the Commonwealth, across the city, across the, the country, really not opening their doors again. If this continues, if there's another spike, which, you know, if you're listening to the experts, we really could see that, what impact potentially could that have in fiscal twenty-two, fiscal twenty-three, if we see a large exodus of businesses leave the city?
It, it could have a huge impact and I, that's really what the concern is for assessors. And like I said, at the Department of Revenue, obviously, the more businesses that leave the city, those, those values are just going to plummet and it, it's going to get picked up by the residential class. As the, again, as those values go down, the residential class has to pick them up. And, and it, that's the big unknown. I think, I think we can all assume that many properties are, are going to come in with lower income from last year. How much lower, you know, you, you have certain properties that were able to stay open. So some won't be as impacted as, as others, but I, I think we won't know until we see the actual income and expense, but as businesses don't reopen, those values obviously are, are going to go down.
Council Dolan?
I'm not going to be, I'm not going to do the.
Council, ask the questions. And for anyone, please ask the questions. This is, this is complicated. Take the time, ask the questions.
So Julie, I'm sorry to make you go back, but when you talked about the personal property, I, I don't know what slide it was. What, what, what did you say the personal property because there was an increase in the personal property value?
Personal property values did increase as a whole. They went up eight-point-five percent. A lot of personal property value is in utilities. So utilities have to pay on their poles and wires. They report to us what, what their new growth is, and this is another change for next year. The Department of Revenue is going to be requiring that there's a blended method. So we actually have to get a full list of all the, the property that utilities have in the city and value that on, on the cost approach and then use it. It's kind of complicated, but there will be no more of, of the utility just reporting their values and their new growth. Department of Revenue is going to require that they're actually valued also. That could be a change to, to next year's assessments also.
But the personal, so is the eight-point-five, is that, is that high or low? Is that average? Is that, because the personal property is also like any manufacturers or any, any commercial, like if they, if they get new machinery, stuff like that?
Correct. Manufacturers are exempt, but it's, but you're right. It, it's businesses, it's, it's equipment that they have in, in the businesses. Yeah.
So is, is eight-point-five like?
It is pretty, that's pretty average.
Thank you.
Julie, can I, oh, I'm sorry, Jay.
I'll do some more, of course.
Sorry. And I apologize for earlier not raising my hand, Jay.
Okay.
Julie, do you ever, you know, obviously the commercial, the impacts to, to businesses are unknown, but undoubtedly going to be significant. Do, do we have a further breakdown? Do do we have a further breakdown, the commercial that is, for example, there's a couple of large franchises in the city. Who were pretty secure and indeed who are doing better now than before versus the mom and pop shops. Do we have any idea of the breakdown, because some of these businesses are not only going to survive, they're in fact thriving. So I guess my question is like, what are we looking at in terms of potential, because I'm thinking the most vulnerable of the small mom and pop shops. What do they comprise in the commercial real estate?
Um, right, so I I could, I don't have it right here with me, I probably should have, I'm. I'm going to just guess off the top of my head that probably the bigger businesses, the bigger. Complexes, how do I want to say it, the the. Oh, I can't think of the word that I want, I'm so sorry, but anyway.
Like the strip malls or the.
You know, down on Route one, strip malls, thank you, Jay, that's exactly what I was trying to think of. They're probably. I'm going to say sixty to seventy. That might be a little bit high percent of of the commercial industrial right now. So. Those will remain, but again, if they did see any dip in their income, I know a lot of them that you're thinking of, but did stay open, they did thrive, their drive throughs, you know, were. So they they will, they will help to to maintain some of that value. It it's going to be, you know, the places that lost their leases, you know, their. Their income from from that. Does that make sense?
It does, but we don't, I I guess we don't know, so forgive my ignorance, but. The area of commercial real estate, do you subdivide it in any way by the nature of the business on the real estate?
We do, I and I can get that for you, we do have class codes for each type of business, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, that's what I meant, so we would have an idea of what we're looking like, McDonald's isn't going anywhere, they're going to be here, Chick-fil-A is going to be here. So the 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 question, the concern is for the for the smaller shops, right, for the restaurants and the other stuff, so I'm just wondering what we're looking at, what's the mix of commercial?
I can definitely get that for you.
Thank you.
And Sam, can you send it to Virginia for all of us?
I will do that.
Thanks, Julie. All right, any other questions, thoughts, concerns? All right, well, Vice President Jackson.
I almost made it. Hey, Delicio, hi, Julie, nice to.
Hello.
Then it's been great listening to you. I just want to say after listening to all of this, I'm. Keep our fingers crossed that Catherine Federick can get us in some really good businesses downtown. It sounds like she's been doing a really good job working at trying to bring people in, she has great plans, so hopefully that'll switch this all around and we don't have to feel so doom and gloom about. Losing businesses and we get those little small and pop, small pop shops up and running in our little city. So thanks again for being here tonight, Julie, we really do appreciate it, Thursday evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you to Vice President Jackson, Council Cobus.
Perfect, thank you, this is, this is all awesome, and it appreciate the the further explanation about how. Covid could impact the overall assessment for and and value assessment next year for commercial. The one thing I wanted to ask about is, so with with the shift, the the estimate. You know, the the illustrative one point three five shift, if we leave it the same. The estimated impact to the median tax bill for residential. Would be five point four six, an increase of roughly five and a half percent. And then on the commercial side, the increase would be roughly. Eight percent? Am I reading that correct?
Tax bill, yes.
Now that. Should we be looking at the the median or the average? So so, but okay, so maybe we should be looking at the averages there, so for commercial, the average increase would be. Two point eight percent and for residential, it'd be four point seven five. My question is. Does that, does that sound right, should we be expecting both of those to rise at roughly, you know, if if. We're increasing the levy by two and a half percent plus growth, shouldn't we expect both commercial and residential to raise to rise at roughly the same rate? It it my expectation is for you to talk about overall assessed values changing, but.
Right, and and so the. The increase that you're seeing, if you go back. Residential values went up. As a whole by four percent, commercial values went up by two percent.
You mean the assessed values?
Yes, yes, the assessed values. So. A shift of one point three five. Would main would maintain the same percentage shift. The residential, however, did still increase two percent more in value than the commercial. So they do pick up two percent more of the levy.
So just for. Argument sake, say we just rose by two and a half percent overall. If. Residential assessed values rose by two percent more than commercial, then we could. Roughly expect to see like four and a half percent, just for ballpark. And a little bit less on the the commercial side, and that's why we're seeing the the difference between. The percent increase for the tax bill being a higher percentage increase for residents than for commercial. In my understanding is traditionally the commercial assessed values have been relatively stable year over year, and and it's on the residential side that we see the. The the big sways up and down. In the past, that's been the trend, now what what comes up next year with covid and all that is is sort of. Uncertain, you know, unprecedented times, as they like to say. But traditionally, so is that. A rough, good rough assessment?
Right, if if we saw the, I'm I'm want to make sure I understand your your question, so if we saw the same increases. In assessed values that we saw here, and if there were only the two and a half percent increase. You, right, you would see. Two percent in residential and. Almost nothing in commercial.
Okay, got it.
Right, I'm sorry, I'm hoping I'm understanding.
No, no, that that's perfect. It so it's it's the increase in the assessed value that's causing the. A lot of the difference that we're seeing in the percent increase for a tax bill.
Right, so. That's exactly right, the the assessed value as a class as a whole is what dictates. The percentage of levy. That they're going to absorb, I guess you would say. So, yeah, as the residential increases by more than the commercial, their percentage of levy increases by that much. The good news, I guess, not really good news for anybody, but. Is that because the the assessed values increased as a whole, it can absorb that increase better.
Perfect, yeah, it it the just inevitably every year, I'll I end up with a number of questions to say, I I thought we had a prop two and a half, why did my. Bill increase by more than two and a half percent, so. Thank you for explaining that.
Sure, and especially with the debt exclusion, you know, that.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Well, if there are no other questions, comments or concerns, Julie, I want to thank you for taking the time on a Thursday night coming down. You're doing a really nice job, I know this has been challenging in a lot of different ways for calendar twenty and fiscal twenty one thus far. But thank you for always having an open door policy, very quick with an email response, certainly appreciate that. So have a terrific night, I'd also like to thank Jim Jones for. For his partnership tonight and getting this off scheduled night. Meeting to go, so Jim, thank you for all your help, that being said, I would call for an adjournment at seven twenty nine.
Back it.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thanks, Julie, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Julie.
Have a great night.
You too.
Just reminder, the public hearing is Tuesday night. Bye, everyone.
Good night, Jay, good night, everybody.